Okay, we call the meeting order at 7:00 PM. We stand for pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go Tigers.
I accept the motion for approval of the agenda of October 10th. I'd like to make an amendment to that to include in the action items I appointment of So I have two more I'd like to add, I'd like to add J, FOIA policy, and A, collection of reports. I accept the motion to approve the agenda of October 10th, 2013 as amended. Salute. I'll second that. That is accepted by Catman? Or by Bob? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Accept the motion to the approval of the minutes of September 12th, 2013, regular order. Motion by Clark, support by Catman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Any public comment?
Folks, I want to introduce myself. My name is Tony Cutler. I'm from East Jordan. I'm the city commissioner there, and deputy mayor, and I'm running for state representative. And I've been going around to the different townships and knocking on doors and meeting people that don't know that I'm running. I'm a Republican candidate. I work for Boynton City High School. I teach business and economics there. And just so you've got my contact information, I'll make this available to everybody. I am a former NRA employee, and like I said, running right now. I just wanted to introduce myself, let you know, and I'm sure we'll see you around the elections until August. Our current rep district master is running for senate, and we have an open house seat. And like I said, the primary will be in August. So anyway, I'll be around for a while to answer questions. My number and contact info are on there, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Julie Marks, and I just wanted to thank Sam as well as Rob for doing the job so fast on my front lawn. I was really pleased with their effort.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janet Smith Hickman, and I wanted to propose that we approve somehow in the village the ability to have backyard chickens, three to four hens, like the proposal or the ordinance that's in Traverse City. I did a quick Google search, and there's just 23 cities that came up right away of cities in Michigan that allow for backyard chickens. Kalamazoo, Ann Arbor, Detroit, Grand Rapids, a whole bunch of them. And I would really like to be able to do that in my backyard. There are specific ideas I have for the same as the Traverse City ordinance about the rules and what would you have to do to be in compliance to have chickens, you know, that could only be hens. They'd have to be 25 feet from the property line and so forth. I have a copy of this if anybody wants to see it. So I just wanted to put that out and see what we can do about getting the ordinance changed.
Any other comments? At this moment, we will close public comment. Reports. Scott, please.
Thank you. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to look over the police department report from last month. Pretty busy month. Everything's kind of fell out primarily to the staff. Some other things we did, race qualification, was able to go to do Lansing and pick up two final guns, so we're kind of out. All the guns that we, our total of, we have six handguns now, two long guns, and two shotguns, all at the cost of zero to the Central Lake. We got them all through the state. They were forfeited weapons, so. A lot of time spent on just follow-up complaints or investigation. Just last month, we're probably 9.5% increase over thanks to everyone last year, so we're keeping busy.
Any questions?
Oh, actually, I hear you have any questions. I had Alan and Bob come today and show you what the trophies are about, and I kind of looked at it last, the last month.
He wanted us to show this off. It says winner, first place, governor's trophy, Michigan Police Pistol Match 2013, classy, won by Central Lake Police Department, Al Burnett and Bob Burnett. We kind of stacked the deck on them.
Congratulations.
Just so you know, there's about five different levels. State police, Detroit police, they're four A, and then there's A teams, B teams, C, D, E. Well, we're E team, which means departments from zero to seven. And it seems like it keeps getting bigger every year. So there's a lot of teams. Bill Chapman and I won two years ago, and last year he couldn't go because of health in the family. And this year, Bob is, my son Bob is taking my place as training director for all the training and to help, to help shot. And I'm not completely gone. I'm kind of here to help out if I ever need to, but I'm backing off. I'm going part-time from part-time. But we just wanted to show that off, and it's already been in the paper, and many of you have already seen it. But it just happens that both and I, both Bob and I have been national champions in shooting, so we got together and we just kind of blew them away.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dave Scott. Sam, DPW?
Well, I'm going to keep mine simple, because Rob's got quite a bit on his. Everybody has a copy of DPW operations. Number four around there, flooding cap water, same things were submitted. Of the 10 samples that were submitted, they all come back below the MCL level, like 14 minute levels. Number six, the flushing of water mains, that .393 means .393 million gallons of water we flushed out when we flushed the mains. Thirteen Monday morning, I went down to the Bella Rhyrotery Club. They had a meeting, and I told them thank you very much for their donation to the flag. Took pictures of it, and they got them off.
Thanks for doing that, Sam.
Any questions?
Well, the Bella Rhyrotery, Sam, are they going to be doing up a plaque for that?
They're going. What's his name, Ken?
Bob Morgan.
Bob Morgan's going to be getting ahold of Ken, and we're going to get together and plan out what size flag and, or what size plaque and where we want to put it at. But he will be getting in contact with Ken on that.
I see they finished up the flight path today. Any questions for Sam? Lyle, Mark?
That is a she who hasn't got too many down there. We've been picking up leaves, we've been cutting grass, taking care of things, getting ready to close up. We have turned in, according to the computer, 54,830 dollars this past year, so we're up quite a bit. I have taken and turned in in cash 37,128. So we are up considerably with the last year. Other than that, I guess that's pretty much all. We'll be picking leaves until I leave to go home.
Any questions? I'd like to thank you for another good season, Lyle, because we've been getting great seasons in the park.
I got some reports for you that I pulled up, and I'll turn those in later.
Okay. Thank you very much. Odd correspondence. A lot of the same stuff I read at every last meeting. Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, Bureau of Construction Code is having a notice of a public hearing, October 24th, 2013, at 9:00 AM in Oakla. So if anybody's interested, they should let me know. I won't read the entire thing. The other one is from Consumers Energy. Their public hearing will be September 17th at 2:00 PM in Lansing.
September.
That's September 17th. Hey, I'm glad you're there. That made that quicker. Do you send them on? You have this on there? The other correspondence I'll deal with under President's report, so that is all correspondence I have. Committee reports. Rob?
I talked to Shaver Lighting. The 32 retrofitted LED lights for the streetscape will be delivered November 15th. As soon as we get them in, Sam and the rest of the DPW will start replacing them. Again, we currently have lights there, so it's not like we're going to be going without lights. So we're just going to be going in sections, replacing out the old ones with the new LED lights. That's it.
Oh, they've had a good time in November 15th, isn't it, Sam?
I won't hear it.
But no, I'm glad that's moving on. No, I'm glad that project's moving on, so that's great. Rob, is there a word?
Yes, Ken just mentioned, we received, we received the DQ evaluation on our wastewater system. The results are very good. Overall drain field systems well maintained, operating well, known in case of any wet or saturated soil. There were four minor items indicated we need to have updated. Sam's all over them. We will have them done. They have to be done by December 1st, 2013, and they're on schedule to be completed in November. As Sam stated, the flushing of the main water lines are completed. Everything looked good. Actually, the water looked very good. We replaced two residential lines. One of those, one of Ralph Heinz, it was kind of difficult, 55 PSI, so that's really good. We had one new sewer count up on Lake Street, another new water count. You mentioned a lot of copper, water surfaces. Repaired a water leak at patent insurance. Repaired one sewer service. Repaired the floats at the flood station and checked and repaired all sewer caps that were, need to be maintained. And other than that, everything looked pretty good. If anybody has any questions on the DQ report, I'll mention the items.
Thank you, Rob. Bill, law enforcement?
They've been kind of busy. Scott's getting vehicles ready for the winter and doing some maintenance on those. I'd like to, I'd like to take this time to, in behalf of the council, ask Ms. Burnett to come up here, Al, if you would.
That's you.
I already got it, too.
Well, just from the, from the council, we'd like to show our appreciation for your, your unselfish dedication to the village of Central Lake. And this is a letter stating that, signed by the council, and we'd like you to have that. And we have a plaque here that is most in keeping with your 50 years of law enforcement experience, and you've been a real asset to the village. I just don't know what we, our, our professional department as it is, is a, is a tribute to you. You started it, you put it together, you caused it to be. You know, it's, it's because of you, and we appreciate that.
Even though Al's not officially retiring, we gotta catch him before he drops for Florida, so it's surprising.
And Bill, and Luke Kent, that'll work on you. Okay, maybe, where's the letter? There we go. Pull the letter up a little bit, Al. There we go. I got everybody really well dressed. You should have seen me with the commissioners this morning. Thank you.
May that be closed by her part? Denise, communication?
I would just like to comment on Mrs. Hickman's chicken request. This isn't the first time I've, I've known of people in the village who, who would like to see this be, and I, I'd just like the council to have a discussion on it at some point, instead of just letting it go away. I'd like to discuss it.
Would you like to discuss it?
Doesn't matter.
My, my thought, I'll tell you right up front, my thought, and it's, I'm not even going to say whether I personally like chickens or not. Personally, I need to hear from more than one person, that 950 odd residents of Central Lake want chickens. So I'm not saying yes, no, for, against, like, not. I'm just saying, we need to hear from a lot more people before I think, I'm speaking for myself, but up here on the council, before, I, I, I don't know how to pursue until we hear from more people.
So would that be a public hearing to hear from the residents? To give them an opportunity?
I'm, I'm not opposed to a public hearing. I mean, at some point, we do have to engage the public. I, I've always said, I'm here on the council to do what the residents of the village of Central Lake want in their village, and I think some of them need to hear from them. How about a petition? Any, anywhere we could start, I'm. Janet, write that to him.
Yeah.
Give her a place to start. Yeah, oh, yeah. And I, I hope you understand, man. You know, I mean, we just, we need to get a bunch of broader representation from the residents of the village.
Well, I have a, kind of a quick little survey I took on the Facebook page for the Central Lake area politics and opinion page, and we got over 10 people just to immediately say they'd be interested right away. Not all 950 residents of Central Lake are going to want or have chickens. You know, there might be 100 people or 50 people that want to do that. So as far as everyone weighing in on it and saying yes, a lot of people aren't going to care, and they're not going to want to do it. It's just whether or not, you know, we're going to, as a, as a community, allow it in our area. It would be, it'd be far less intrusive that dogs, you know, as far as people having in their backyards. So I'd be happy to do the petition and, and, but I, I guess my point was is that I don't think all 950 people have to, have to agree because not all 950 people want them.
I don't, I don't expect to hear from 950, but I, I would, I would never make a decision on having heard from 10. My, my, I just, it's going to take a much broader polling of the. Well, 100 would be 10%. That would be 10% of the village residents.
It is a real common thing in communities to have chickens in the backyard. So, you know, we're kind of, as a rural community, and there's the, your right to Farming Act that's available right now, that's been, the state put through, that allows for people to have the right to farm on their property. So, you know, we could, we can look at that a little bit closer as well, but I think we can certainly get the petition out, get that going.
Ken, is there an ordinance against any kind of animals in the village? Can you have a horse in your backyard?
No.
Isn't there a horse across the street?
That's outside the village.
I mean, is there an ordinance against?
Yes.
Any kind of livestock?
Or exotic animals?
Can't bring my prawn in, and my hyphon. Your goats and your grass.
There is a, I think we've looked at some of the, we're talking about pretty well written to allow.
Cross off the chickens. Right.
Allow them to be. But I didn't give you a lot of information about the whole. A lot of, I don't want any three or more, whatever. Betty, Betty's questions, we'll get to you back on track.
Okay.
The harboring of any horse, cow, donkey, mule, goat, sheep, pig, duck, goose, turkey, chicken, guinea hen, or exotic animal within the village is morbid.
So it would be easy enough to make an exception to that? I mean, an amendment to cross off the chickens?
If, if the majority of people truly want chickens. Some may want goats, sheep, and pigs. I mean, it's opening up a big, I'm not opposed to doing it, but we have to do it properly. We have to really do our homework on what the community wants.
So we're going to start with a petition and start there.
I think that's a good starting point.
Would the planning commission be interested in looking at this? I know that's not in the scope of land use really, but if they wanted to.
They would probably get involved in it, I would hope, but I think once again, we, first, we need to know if there's a, a big interest for or against before we spend a lot of. Yes.
Do you want just residents able to sign a petition or people who pay taxes in the village?
Not, this is mine, this is me speaking, okay? I think people that pay taxes have a voice in something like that, like business owners that do not reside in the village. I, I think there's a time we have to give them a voice.
Business owners should be included in that, even if they don't live here.
Any other thoughts on that? Any local communication? Stay, Denise?
Yep.
Joe, final personnel?
Pretty much been reviewing the budget a lot. The only thing that I've got, Ken handed off to me, I'm right here, the Michigan Municipal League and their felon accords, I guess you, you're here for negotiating the natural gas prices for anything within the village for the municipality.
For ourselves.
For our use only, and if we want to move forward with it. I don't know all of them. I believe, I think the DPW garage and the campground bathhouse are the only two that we really have natural gas in, unless Sam well-ho. Pardon me?
Well-ho.
Okay, the well-house, so I don't know how much it would actually help us with the, the cost of gas right now. There's a couple of options. It didn't print out formally in this one, but if we don't get into this by October 15th, I think it was, then we can re-up it again and re-evaluate it again in next year, basically, I guess. So I don't know if we want to go forward with this. It's basically just filling it out, which Rachel has all the information to fill this out and see what they say, if the board wants to go forward with it.
I understand, all right. We're giving MML information to use to go out and pursue it. We're not agreeing to anything, we're not accepting anything, doing anything, we're just telling, we're interested, here's our information, use it to go bargain for prices collateral.
So I, I can't see where it would hurt us to at least let them see if they can get us better prices. Myself and the gas industry and knowing the way that gas prices fluctuate, I've never been a fan of locking into prices, so as, if they're going to continually manage them prices and negotiate them for us for the lowest price possible, I think it would be a really good thing for us to do. But I wouldn't be in favor of locking in the price myself. The council will agree, pretty likely for that, so we maybe have Rachel do her handiwork in filling this out. Thank you, Rachel. The next thing I had was, we're going to be starting the budget review for next year, budget here. Normally, the middle to end of November, we get into it pretty hard. I bring it to the council this month for any capital improvements. We've talked about side block capital improvement for next year. We've talked campground capital improvement for next year. And I want to get a, basically, a budget put together on what we were, we want to do, so when we go into the budget and know, we know what we need a budget for, for capital improvements in certain areas. Other than that, that's pretty much what I've been doing.
Questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe. Lila, parts, public prepared?
Most of the stuff that is going on, everybody has a, it's under action items, so I don't take the extra time for this, but I've done such a tremendous job, I'm so pleased with them, and we will further get into this recommendation that we have in the action items. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Lila? Thank you, Lila. President's report, chickens already discussed. As they mentioned, the State Street project, the bike lane, I believe, is, I didn't drive down and look, is completed? Are you aware of it? So close to being done. And I, I can assure you, I've heard a lot of people say it's not three feet, it's, it's three feet. It doesn't look like you're driving by. I stopped, I truly measured, I, I just know, it is three feet with one foot. So if you hear people say, my gosh, it's only that wide, it, it looks like driving down the road, I'll give you that, but if you get out and look, it's three feet of pavement and another foot of shoulder beyond that. So that, that went well, I believe. How was that, 8096 Old State? The church did sign that letter of intent. They gave you $300, so they will be cleaning that up, and they're going to fulfill that within their 60 days, and we're going to talk about purchasing it in the grand round. So that's moving forward. Tuesday night, Nate Summers, Chair of the Planning Commission, myself and Corey Hudson, Chair of the DDA, went to a meeting in Traverse City on basic parliamentary procedure. And I have to tell you, I thought it was going to be quite boring for two hours, but it was really a pretty good meeting. So we learned some things. Two things I learned, the only two things that I'll bring to the council that I did learn is, they recommended we never support a motion. Motions are always second. And the only reason, you second a motion to open it for discussion, it doesn't mean you're supporting it, it only means you want to discuss it. So everybody says never support a motion, always second it. And the second I was, as, when we do a motion, we should, we should take the 30 second or the one-minute pause and write it down. It should be written down, read. It's easier for the recording secretary, for HSA, everyone to have a clear understanding. And they said it's, it's just a good policy to do, so I think we'll start doing that to every motion we go. Because I know we don't have someone prepared ahead of time, things come up. We'll put it in writing, we'll read it, vote on it, so we know very clearly what we're stating, and it's just a good record of that. Those were the two big things I learned there, so. Those were the two big things I learned there, so. Tonight, I went and met, just came out of a meeting at, in Bel Air with the Grand, Traverse Regional Land Conservancy. They got a grant for, that'd be fifteen thousand dollars to put together a water trail map. All, all their money is, is, can be used for is to put together that map. There's no money for signage, there's no money to truly develop it, it's to create a map, which will truly start at the far end of our chain, it includes Ellsworth and all the way up through the Union Six Mile, all the lakes, all the way up through, it goes all the way up into the, into, up on the fence off in Traverse City, there's a hundred and fifty-one access points. Now, what they're trying to do is they're asking us to give them good information on. They mall out, cause that'll save them a lot of money, either hire somebody to do it, so asking all the villages, the township, everybody involved, to give them back information on what truly is your access point. This is the road end, is usable, the amenity's there, so I, I promised them, I spoke for all of us, I promised them that they will get full cooperation from the villages of Central Lake. And they talked about maybe GPS, and so it's a work in progress. I think, I think it's a great thing, so I think we'll help them in any way we can gathering the information. And then their overall goal in the end is that we all start working together as communities along the chain and develop a nice plan with the common signage and everything else, so. I, I thought it was really good. Nate Summers at the Planning Commission last night, he, we, we've talked about sidewalks in the village, a lot of things, made contact in Northern Lakes Economic Alliance. Found out that there is a program, Safe Routes to Schools, that will fund sidewalks if they fit within their parameters of Safe Routes to Schools. I'm gonna talk to Ben Williams today. Ben Williams was, was all for pursuing the project, there's other things the school has to do, they have to set up a Safe Route to School program. It truly has to be done by the school, the village would apply for the grant, I believe, because, but the, but the school has to have the program in place. At his council, at his meeting Monday night, he's gonna take it to the board and see if one member of that board would like to work with, one member of our board in pursuit. I think there's grant coordinators available, grant facilitators, so I would like to ask if anybody on this board would like to be willing to work with the school, like maybe somebody at, I don't know.
Uh, the sidewalk guy, yeah.
I was, I know, I just think it's, I think it's a good program, if we fit the parameters, they'll pay eighty percent of the cost.
He's got it on his list.
Twenty percent match, I'm pretty sure, I know. No, I just think it's a good thing to pursue Bannett, and so will, if the school board agrees, I, I think we'll pursue it, see what happens.
I'll be with the.
Thank you. The other one was, at, at the DDA meeting the other evening, I'm not gonna, I'm just telling you the truth, but the DDA is gonna be applying to pursue the Main Street program record, which is, which I think is gonna be a lot of help to the DDA, a lot of help to Central Lake in, in vitalizing the downtown area, so I think that's very good news. Well, any for council, there's going to be a Creating Opportunities Summit, November sixth, from nine to four in Traverse City. Hosted by the Traverse Bay Poverty Reduction Initiative in support of the framework for our future project. So, if anybody's interested, let me know, I said it's Wednesday the sixth, from nine to four, so. I think either try to attend, that's all I can say right now, if anybody else wants to, let me know, we'll talk. That is all I have on the president's report, any questions? Approval of bills, accept a motion to approve the payment of bills prepaid in the amount of fifteen thousand, thirty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. Payable in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Payables in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents, for total approved bills in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and five dollars and eighty-five cents. Chapman?
I was second.
Second by Bannett, any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Rachel?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yep. Yes. Pass me. Under new business, email database, just so, excuse me. The village is setting up, and correct me if I get anything wrong, emails for village council, individually, anybody who puts their email on there. The Downtown Development Authority Board, the Chamber of Commerce, the, except the Planning Commission, business owners and residents within the village that submit their email address. There would be different email databases on, just so if there's information that we feel needs to go out, it's, it's, it's a much easier process to do, Rachel, complete one message, we decide who it goes to and send it out. So, any residents that want it, we put the word out, put the word out more. We're not collecting email addresses, they, they truly do just submit them to us and let us know they want them on there, we're not gonna take anybody's from anywhere else and put it on there, they only, at their request only. So, I, I think that's a good thing, is we try to communicate better with people. So, any of you that have an email you'd like her to have, send it off to. Yeah? Okay. The other new business item I have is, is parking within the village limits. There's been, there's been some complaints about vehicles that park on Old State Street for extended period of times and block visibility. They feel it's a safety issue with pedestrians. I've talked to Scott about it, I've, I've talked to numerous people, I, I don't even know where to start, parking policy within a village, but it's something as a council, I'm just, if anybody's, any ideas, should we, shouldn't we? I, I honestly don't, I think it's always been a issue, but I think it's something we're gonna have to address, cause it is a safety concern. Now, do you have anyone to say on that? And, and all, I mean, I, cause I, we've talked, I don't.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda one of those things that I don't think there is a good, simple answer. I mean, I think sometimes, Ken, I talk about it, we make ordinances that address parking, so we can come up with a, what if it doesn't cover it in the ordinance? So, you're always behind the eight ball, for lack of better words. Um, one of the issues we have is, you know, you know, obviously our town's a little bit different in certain aspects, downtown's different than it is on State Street, and State Street's different than it is on Howard Street, and Howard Street's different. So, it's, you know, you're trying to find a fix-all, there really isn't, so we've been trying to discuss some things as far as times, um, the amount of days, um, and stuff like that, cause if not, people, you know, extend their driveway though into the roadway, which technically it's legal right now, but it doesn't really seem fair. I mean, a lot of people that argue, you know, how can they do that, and, you know, but if it's legally parked and it's legally planted, it can be there. And if I have to meet them, that helps the whole community as a whole, so that's kind of our, our challenge at this point, is how do you get to put it in wordage that actually benefits? And it doesn't mean I have to continuously go out and chase these things out, cause the whole purpose of making ordinances or rules is that it's simpler to follow, simpler to enforce, and I'm not sure. That's kind of our struggle at this point, is, Ken and I have been wrecking our brains quite a bit as far as how we, you know, address issues of safety and, you know, just to kinda keep people happy as a whole, so. But yeah, if there's any other input, um, you know, I think every community has a problem, how do you address parking as a whole, so.
Well, I'm not looking for answers tonight, but I'm seriously thinking about it, because it's like Scott said, it, it's people are, are truly starting to use it as their, basically their driver, parking vehicles that are leaving there for extended periods of time, and it's one hundred percent legal right now, they're, they're allowing it.
Some, some villages put time, I mean, you can't park more than three days, but what happens is on the third day, they just move it, one more parking spot forward, and then three days later, they move it another parking spot forward, so. And that's kind of what we're trying to avoid, is, you know, not changing things, and if we're gonna have to continue to change, cause it costs the village money for the attorney to look at it, to, you know, put it in writing, so. Yeah, so given if you have any suggestions or things that can help out, we'd appreciate any of those, so.
We can look for, read it a little, maybe, but no.
No, any idea, I'm seriously over the next month, any thoughts, any, anything.
Well, right now, this is only a summer issue, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's a summer.
We have a no parking policy.
Yeah, we're snow solid. Yeah, but it, it kinda creates a problem, because, you know, when Sam's guys go sweep the streets and stuff like that, it creates a problem. But it's kind of.
Couldn't that be part of the solution, is that there's a regular street sweeping schedule in the downtown area or in the, on the streets, and that same as with the snowplows for snow removal, we need to have the streets clear for dusting them, or whatever you do with them, washing them, or scrubbing them, waxing them, whatever?
You can make all kinds of.
You gotta park on one side on certain days and the other side on other days where there's something to process. If you're, if you're gonna, if you're gonna declare a vehicle, a banded vehicle after twenty-four hours in the, on the streets, and you know, it.
I'm not sure if that's what we need, and that's kind of the whole point of having some input, I mean, do we need it in the, in twenty-four hours, I'm not sure. And, you know, getting in with Sam would be beneficial too, as far as what helps him and his guys, you know, do their job too, cause I know it's, it's a pain in the butt to actually sweep around, you know, certain vehicles.
If you schedule the, the street sweeping and, you know, maybe notice of that, maybe, maybe that would help.
But that's only one of the issues, the streets, I mean, there are other issues that people are concerned about, people parking there, and a safety issue, and all those other things, so.
And I'll, and I'll be honest, the biggest issue with this one was, a kid darted out from there, almost got hit, and it, it's, I guess, for lack of better words, high-profile vehicle, so it, it's not like a little car parked there, it blocks the views of the sidewalk and things going on, and kids playing, and it. I personally, it truly is a safety issue, I, I hope we can find some way to address things like that within the village.
Should we be looking for a lot of public info, for, I guess, another type of public hearing, to see what the public wants for parking in the summertime, or do we just move forward with something?
Is there somewhere in the village that there is public parking? Could you park it at the school, or park it at the ball field when it's not in use? Park it at the mini storage place where you pay to park something, or not to pay to park something? You talking about a motor home, or some, a big, something big?
It, it, those are things we didn't discuss. We didn't discuss.
It won't fit in his yard?
Has anybody asked him to just move it?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
I was just gonna bring up the, the obvious, uh, safety issue at the main four corners with the big profile vendor trucks, when everybody's trying to pull out at that intersection. Um, you know, I love the village market, I shop, shop there regularly, um, but those vendor trucks are a safety issue, you can't see, um, the south side at all. Um, when you're wanting to turn left or cross the street there, I just wanted to bring that up, I know that's probably a high issue.
That would be another good point, is how do we address issues of commercial vehicles and stuff like that? So, yeah, just any, any of that, I'm really impressed.
I, I can tell you, at the time zoning went in, it was talked about, pardon, was, was talked about, part of the zoning, and everybody at that point agreed, there, there is no solution to parking problems in the village of Central Lake we can address, but it doesn't mean we can't keep coming through ideas and trying.
Yeah, I, I guarantee, if you come up with something in writing, you know, somebody will challenge it, or it'll become an issue two days later, so, yeah, it's something we should, put some thought into and think about.
Think about it? Think about it?
Should we submit a rate for the law enforcement, Betty, you're really research?
Well, there is a, a safety issue, I think they could.
They're truly, you can use a safety. We just have something that comes close to.
Do you think the.
So, anybody, any thoughts, any ideas, anything, just jot them down, and we'll keep moving on, any residents, we're looking for ideas. I can see in the mulch pile, as we, as we all know, that, that whole area was shut down because the DEQ said we couldn't burn a brush pile, we didn't know how to control people dropping off brush, it was, so it was closed. I wanna open it back up now that it's fall and allow people to put lawn clippings and leaves down there. And, and I wanna, if we do, I want it very well marked, very well mown, very well posted everywhere, if anybody caught dropping off brush, will be prosecuted. I, I don't know how else to make sure it doesn't that, and it probably still will, but it becomes an issue when we allow them the privilege and then they abuse it and drop off brush, so.
No brush. Grasp it, no brush.
If you have these lawn, leaves and lawn. Correct, Sam?
Have a definition of brush. Township will take your brush.
No, we, all that's allowed there is leaves and lawn.
And I realize that, you better have a definition of brush.
Why's that?
Because if I have leaves on a stick, is that considered brush, even though there's leaves?
It's brush.
All can be there, it's.
You can make a hole, that's all you need.
Then, then, if, if people, in my opinion, if they wanna be that way, it stays closed and they get taken to the township on Tuesdays and Saturdays. We're trying to offer the people in the village a great option, and we're asking for cooperation, you know what I mean? And I agree, we don't, we don't get the right signage, we're working right, people.
Can you draw pictures?
There, there may be some things we can do to help ensure that too, we can, we can look at, uh, cameras, uh, we, we have some spot cameras that we stick out now in certain areas of the town, when we're getting lead for them. Um, we can do stuff like that, there's videoing, uh, motion videoing, I mean, there's a lot of things that we can get into, um, to ensure that people aren't doing it. Um, I've always said it before, that's a great resource for the residents, and I, I'd love to see it back open and informed with, uh.
I know a lot of people don't, don't see the big issue, but right now, there's a big issue there, and, and the GPWs, they're putting a lot of time on brush out of there. I do believe there's a lot of people on Old State Street that would love to see that leaf pile open back up.
Oh, my God, yes.
No, so, if there's, I mean, if there's no objection, I would, I would love to see Sam open it back up, let the residents know, and.
Yes.
I have one question, when you're classifying brush. I have huge perennial gardens, and they are all trimmed off in the fall, are you gonna consider that brush or leaves?
I'm gonna consider it brush, because it's not leaves or lawn clippings. The only reason is, cause all we can have down there, according to DEQ, now, we, we can have a brush pile, we just can't burn it. So, we can't literally just keep accumulating brush with nowhere to go. Right now, we're gonna actually haul that brush pile that's there up to the township where they can properly deal with it, cause we can't anymore. All we're allowed to have is a mulch pile, and mulch.
Well, I mulch a lot of my plants, so you guys can mulch the rest.
We will define lawn clippings and leaves.
Sam, have you by chance, uh, looked or even up top of your head, know what a sign would cost for down there, you know, dumping a brush?
Nor did.
The print shop will make you those plastic signs for thirty bucks for two-sided ones. I mean, they're not ridiculous, they last a season anyway, if you take them in in the winter, they'll good for next year. You know, it's a waxy corrugated stuff, and you'll put whatever, pick it up in two days.
You have a permanent sign made up in that area.
Yeah, people wanna market well, too.
Yep. I'd definitely be in support of, of doing that.
Is there any objections to opening that back up, or the restriction of its lawn clippings and leaves only? There's no objection?
I guess, my only, my only question is, is how are you going to sign it right now to say just that besides us? Cause we opened that gate up, we all know, there's gonna be trucks in there, so unless we have a sign, we shouldn't.
There, there is a sign there right now, and are we gonna do this, tape up everything? So, it just says, leave it, leaves and lawn clippings.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, just so. Well, until we have the signage here, we won't open it, but I mean, I think we want that to happen. To make it happen. Yeah. Can it, can it happen tomorrow, Sam, so it's open for the weekend? Okay.
Sam will take care of it tomorrow, then we'll.
We'll be open Saturday.
We'll be open. Okay.
Are you gonna put an end date on that?
No. No, because it, I would truly like to see it left open, once, once people understand it, it's, it's mulch only. Any other new business I'm not aware of? Any other new business I'm not aware of?
Ball game starts in thirteen minutes.
Yes.
I'm talking about dog about that.
I think maybe they'll put on old work.
Under action items, A is no synopsis. At the village, we, 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 it's in the paper. We always discuss what we call the synopsis of minutes. My understanding of minutes is what the Open Meetings Act declares as minutes, which is always put in the paper, which truly only shows actions taken, members present or call actions taken. I would like to see us get to the point where, where those are the minutes we keep. We no longer write a synopsis that, that we purchase and, and I'm glad Brad never heard of it, but that we purchased a video recorder with good audio. We have people come up to the mic so it's clearly held and we keep that recording, write the very small, just the minute, and stop having our clerk spend an enormous amount of time writing synopsises of the meetings. And I'm just, I'm just opening that up for discussion right now if there's.
I think it's a great idea. Back, um, and I wanna say it's August, September of last year, I actually approached the township with this same basic idea of putting cameras in this room, audio, and doing a really good job, but it kinda got put to the wayside while other things took place. But I would support that, purchasing of a video camera and maintaining a video.
I, I, I would accept a motion to purchase a video audio recorder, if I'm correct, saying, and then stop writing meeting synopses. We truly keep those recordings.
I'll make that motion.
How much, how much will you spend?
I don't have any idea. Be up to them to decide which one is the best one for money.
To record, what do you? Not to it.
Not to it, see what, what's wrong with your data.
There's so many variables you're gonna get into here on what you want and what you want to do.
Four hours and it's perfect. We have lots of good luck with it. It gets, everything's cool. If it was a little closer, it'd be better, but.
With, with you saying that, actually, I wasn't here last month and I used your guys' video to familiarize myself with what happened and I loved it. And that's kind of a prompt to just move forward again with this. Um, the only downside I could say to any of what we find in almost all of our stuff is audio. Seems to be a big hindrance. Um, so we've talked with Cory a little bit, um, and Rachel doing a little checking also of getting one that can be tied into the mic system and really get a decent system in here. So until we get the cost back, I don't know if we really can put a dollar on it.
I, I would also recommend, uh, I would recommend going with a webcam possibly, putting it right up in the corner and it goes right to the computer. So you don't have to deal with, this takes, um, depending on the time of the video, it can take a couple. Well, it takes about twenty minutes just to, uh, download onto the computer and I have a fast system. And then, uh, it takes, uh, several hours to upload to YouTube. So you, you'll get faster results with going straight to a computer.
If I'm right here, Brad, with the correct system, going directly to a computer, it will super compress the file automatically and quickly. Where, with the digital camera is what they use doesn't.
It would be live. We could watch it at home going on right now.
So like I said, there, there's a lot of options I think we need to look at to do this. I haven't, I support a hundred percent of it. Um, but I don't think you could put a price on that until you actually get to see what it is you want.
I would very highly recommend maybe getting a professional in to give you some recommendations. Or you don't have to have them come in. Maybe you can just go talk to a professional. Give them your room dimensions and they should be able to recommend something.
All right, you've got a motion now.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Looking to purchase. Yeah, well, our purchase over two, you don't have to have an amount. Just have the wish that we can do it.
Well, do I need to make a motion to take over the hearing?
I don't think you guys heard Al in the back, that he suggested talking to Chris, you know, this Chris Corbin, that's his job. I mean, he would be able to say, here it is, blah, 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 and it's done.
Well, you gotta have Ms. Clark rescind your motion.
I can rescind the motion. Okay.
Are you rescinding?
Yeah, I'll rescind it so we can do it next month.
I'll make a motion. Unless you're looking to look at more. Postpone voting until next month when we add more, um, pricing, uh, less the cost of the cameras.
Until the November meeting?
Yes.
Second.
Motion to postpone voting until the November meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Bobby, second by Cattidy, all favor?
So you would no longer be printing the minutes in the paper?
No, we still do those minutes.
Short minutes.
The short minutes that are required under opening the act.
Would the video thus be going on the, um, website for the public to view if you guys get video capabilities?
I, I, I can't see why it wouldn't.
We, we've discussed it today and, um, going back and forth, you guys use YouTube for years, a lot of people do. I, I myself don't know if that's the most professional way for a municipality to hold their videos. I'm not gonna say it's wrong, but I think that it would be good of us if we could maybe maintain two of them on our website. But maintain that diary all the time here in the office that you wanted last year's meeting, you could come in and get a recording of it or whatever. Um, but there's a lot of options to look at that same scenario. But yeah, that's been talked about a lot.
Thank you.
I can see is to appoint DDA members in terms, but we find that maybe this and that. As you know, we, we appointed members to the DDA and the DDA has now, now decided the terms they want those members to serve. And we also have a new member, Melissa. So I think a good point, we should, we should appoint them to their terms for, for that amount of time. I know some are done, but they, they, they serve four-year terms for their first deployment. An equal amount of them will serve one year, two years, three years, four years. So every year, twenty-five percent of that word comes up. But the terms are truly four. Some now will be one, two, three and four as they get reappointed. At the one year, they will get reappointed for four.
Before we do the returns, do we want to add the one that adds in?
I think we'll just reappoint.
Oh, do it all at one time and add it in then? Okay.
So I, I have in front, I truly didn't have time to access all of it, everybody, I apologize. I would, I would make a motion to appoint Michelle Fox, Martin Kirk and Ken Cruzey to one-year terms on the DDA. To appoint Bart Patton, excuse me, Lisa Hooksma and Brian Reese to two-year term. I'll, I'll, I'll give it to you after the meeting, okay?
Okay.
To appoint Tom Kenyon and Randy Weiss with three-year terms. And to appoint Corey Hooksma and Melissa Zelenak to four-year terms. I'll second that motion. Motion by Cruzey, second by Bobby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Melissa's already been approved.
Melissa just wants.
Just now.
Okay, you did that just now, okay.
If she still wants to.
I brought extra.
Are they of that?
I was waiting for public comment. Do you want them now?
Yeah.
These are gonna go on, when they're finished on eleven by seventeen. Right now, we should turn them off like one, two years old. They're rough. There may be a typo and there's some blanks that need filling in, but. Martin's got a copy, Randy's got a copy, you guys have a copy, the planning commission has a copy. Two left.
Can I have one?
Uh, yep. We just gave you one.
Well, I just gave it.
Oh, it's in that one?
It's inside right here below the back. I plagiarized a little bit of.
Well, I saw that. I thought she was doing committees.
Nope, nope.
Okay. You guys are getting Cattidy.
So it's just generic, you know, it's pretty, it's something that we can hand to anybody or that gives them the nuts and bolts of it. It's not going in any great huge detail about the past or the future. It's just, here it is. Contact us if you have questions. Thank you for your.
I think it's great. Thank you.
This, this is what you and Randy Weiss were working on?
Well, I think the most important part are the references on the back. You know, ideally the people that are in that sample will go there and figure things out for themselves too.
We will move on to I can see, change committees. Right there has, uh, has quite an interest in, in chairing the communications.
I'll bring you another one.
I spoke with Rod. I spoke with Denise. Denise is okay with, they switch them with Rod. So, so Rod will chair Communications Committee, which would consist of Rod, Joe and Rob. And Denise would move and chair Sewer and Water, which would then consist of Denise, Joe and Bill. So if there's no objections to that, it will just be done.
And Ms. Mulder will get all new phone list copies of this?
Maybe that's. Yeah, so is there any, is any objection to that? Rod in favor, Lucy in favor, I spoke to both of them. Thank you both. Thank you. E is campground recommendation. The committee brought us a list of recommendations. Everybody has it?
I've looked over this here too and, um, the bottom six things, um, I think, uh, we're, we're trying to follow underneath that capital improvement stuff that we had discussed. Yeah, so if you could maybe, uh, we could just take, take them off just and add them to the capital improvement, uh, program that we'd like to do.
No problem. Because those are things if we knew it had been done, it suggested it could be done.
Right, right. Okay. Other than that, looking at, at what I have on the revenue side of things, where we're at in the campground right now and knowing that there's a bunch in our reservation system that we can only gather ninety-two days worth of, um, data. I would make a motion that we postpone any decisions on the campground until we can gather all of that data.
Problem is, allow us to know how this is gonna work before he leaves.
Do we have, do we have a second? Tell me the, what's your motion, Joe?
That we postpone this until we can gather all of our data from the reservation system.
I would second that motion. Is there any discussion?
I, I don't like, I don't wanna see it postponed. I don't like, Rod, what do you think? Rob?
Well.
We've worked hard on this to get it done.
I, I agree a hundred percent. Uh, we have ninety-two days of data. Uh, how many days are we gonna get if we wait?
We, we should gather the complete season in the campground. Um, I, I would actually, with, with doing this also, um, I would like to maybe move forward. I talked with Lila a little bit about a, um, kind of a questionnaire to get out there to people to, to really get the campers input to see what kind of changes to make, um, and do what. I think that would be a valuable, um, resource for us. Not only one to get it out right now and get some information back before we make major decisions, but also one that could be kept in the campground and handed out to campers as they come in every time and, and gather as much as we can reoccurring data. Um, I think the more data we have, the more informed and educated decision we can make.
Can I put my two cents for this?
Yes, I expect you to.
I brought this up in July. Now it's October. We've been dragging our feet on this. And what, the main thing that I'm concerned with is that red flag and a non-responsible deposit for reservations, so they don't have to pay seven or eight hundred dollars to make a reservation. Opening and closing of the park and a two-dollar disc order for ten beers. I don't think that any more data is gonna do us any good. And if you want more than ninety-two days, you can get it by going, breaking that six months down and pulling in another ninety-two days. There, if, the data's there. Rob had it, uh, the other night at the meeting. I got it right now. Joe, I understand what you're saying and I think getting information back from our people is a good thing. But I think we can take and do that with our reservation system or our web page that we got here. Either way, we put out a thank you, the, the reservation system puts out a thank you. Why can't we take and put a tag on that thank you and have them send a suggestion back to us? Why prolong this? I, I think we, I think we covered a lot of ground this summer with this system. I think it's a. I think we've got it up and running pretty fair right now. There's still a few bugs in it. That ninety-two day, uh, ninety-two days is a, a bug. That's gonna be probably taken care of by November. You know, this is a work in progress and I, I would be, feel a lot more comfortable going home, coming back next year if I had this stuff in the works so I don't have to take and start like we did last year. It was terrible last year. You know it much yourself.
Well, with, with that being said though, you're absolutely right. It was hard to start now. When you introduced a system, um, two weeks after our campground opened while our clerk took reservations over the phone. Very hard to do. That won't happen again because we have this reservation.
I realize that. But as far as information, you were down to the campground and you talked to a lot of the people, Kevin down there. He associated with some of the people down there. I, I don't know how much more information you can get on the first year like this. I think we're gonna get more information next year.
My, my question would be, last year we made thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars in the park. We increased our rates twenty-five percent. So if we did nothing else to improve our park, that was forty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars of revenue. We're, we're pushing close to fifty-four thousand dollars this year. The first three weeks in June were bad weather and the parks were slow. So the first question that comes to my mind is, is why are we discussing changing so much? We've had the best year in our park in a long time. And I have heard no complaints. My, my second question would be, there's a recommendation to lift a four-day minimum on lake sites. It would be, since, since we say we have all this information, is how many weekends did that affect that they weren't rented for four days?
So we went organized in this committee and that's why we presented this as it is.
Well, that's, that's why, but now you're asking us all to vote, so we need, how many, I'm asking how many weekends were not rented for four days because of that? How many weekends were vacant in our park in our busy season because of the four-day reservation?
In the month of May, we rented lake sites, six lake sites. The month of June, we rented eleven lake sites. After the first of July, then we picked up. We had, we had an average of about ninety percent of pill rate in the month of July.
So you're, you're, you're saying the people that didn't come in May and June when our park was basically empty anyway, didn't come because of the four-day stay on the weekend?
I, I.
I mean, I, these are some questions.
I go back and, if we have with that same thing, let's ask the question of, uh, site fifteens not on the lake. What was the, the, uh, occupancy? What was the, the occupancy of that during June and May? And, and was it rented as much, more, less? I mean, we started comparing them.
Yeah, I, I think we got, I, I wonder too, on a, on a two-dollar discount, how many people does that truly affect in our, in our park? I mean, did, did anybody not come because they wanted to pay twenty-three dollars a night instead of 25, or?
But that's not the point. It's kind of a, it's kind of a PR, customer service gesture.
But why, why, why are we fixing things that aren't broke? I heard no complaint from campers and our park system this entire season.
Okay, there's one, one thing I dispute on that. I have brought some complaints to the board about this stuff. And I am managing the park, and if you don't have enough faith in me, when I bring a complaint to the board or to an individual, I mean, there's something wrong.
That's exactly.
Now, we did have complaints about that four-day rule on that lake. It don't affect us after the first of the year, I mean, first of July, for the fact that we got July and August, everybody's out of school. But we do take and have an effect on May and June.
So if we send out a survey to all these campers, we will go back that they, they didn't like that policy? I mean, I, I think that's a great idea to.
What, what does it hurt you? What does that hurt not to take that off?
I'm not against not taking it off, don't get me wrong. I, I actually, I've talked with some people myself, and.
Site 15 was rented out 12, 12 and a half percent. Where lake sites are rented out about five, about six percent.
Though those percentages, I, I, I could, I could change them real quick by changing the dates. I, I could print that out for the entire season. I mean, the percentages to me don't mean much enough. We, we lower the parameters of what are we talking about? Are we talking about it was rented out during June, July, August? July, August, September?
We're, we're, we're talking 4/27 to 6/30. To one, that I'm asking for.
We know that May and June are incredibly slow anyway.
That, that's correct.
I just, I.
That's correct. I'm not denying that. But I think that anytime that we put a restriction out there, takes and affects us.
Because the discussion when we put the four days on was exactly the opposite, overhead mountains, because we did not want people coming to our park, taking our weekends for two days, generating $50 worth of income, and then nobody else using it for the rest of the week because they truly wanted to incorporate the weekend into their stay.
Well, we got, the thing is, that you might take and rent it out for Saturday and Sunday, and still have it available for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It just depends on when they come in.
Well, with that, I, I talked to some people who stayed there on the lake, and, and many of them said that while the four-day thing was, for lack of a better term, a pain in their butt, they weren't real excited about it. They also said it wouldn't hinder them from staying in our campground. With that, we also talked with you and told you that if there, if somebody drove in on a Friday and they wanted a lake site and it was available to them, we gave you that ability to give them that site for that two days, as long as it wasn't previously rented. So why we're having an issue with it, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying it's a good thing, but I can't say it's a bad thing either. We need fifty-four thousand dollars there to stay.
I, I understand it, but why even taking, having the issue with it if we, if we're making money anyway? Why, why, why have it up there? You know, that, that's my, my theory. We put a red flag out there for those people, and that's one thing that interfered there. That red flag was up there, it says, sites unavailable unless you read down below there. When it read, uh, when you read the second line there, unless you reserve for four nights on the lake.
So then, so, so then truly it's not the four-day stay on the lake.
It's not the four-day stay.
It's terminology on the, on the reservation system.
It's the red flag. When they say no, no sites available.
So, or, is that what we're saying? It's not the fact they have to stay four days on the lake? It's more the terminology on the reservation system?
The red flag and the people read for the ones.
We lost some of our old customers because of that.
Because of?
Because of the red flag. Some of those have been coming for years.
You're talking about when you go to the website and you're trying to?
That's right. We've done real good with that, that reservation system. I don't think we're gonna take and put anymore.
That's what I'm saying. It's not an actual rule issue. It's more of a terminology and a flag on our camp, or our reservation system. That's an easy fix without changing any rules.
I don't, I personally don't feel like we need that rule, and I, I think that the cleaner that we can, the cleaner we can make that reservation system out, the better off we're gonna be.
Well, Lyle, that would satisfy you if we, if we would remove the red flag and leave the four-day rule? And then give you the same.
That would be much easier. As it is now, I gotta put it in and it's an admit reservation, or I gotta take and reserve it for four days and then pack two days off.
Is that something you can do without a, without a lot of work, or?
Well, I, according to.
I'm, I'm just confused.
Tyler, yeah, I am, but according to Tyler Duffy, we can do anything with that reservation if we want to pay the money. I mean, that's the thing. They'll, they'll build any program into it. They'll do anything if we pay the money.
You've gone to the site a hundred times. Okay, you see the red flag, but you know.
But to me, I, I don't build it into it with forty, so I know what's there and I know what I'm looking for. So I, to me, it doesn't stand out, but I'm very familiar with it.
Can people just come and spend one night? Or do they have to have four days?
That's what our lake can be.
Only for a lake site.
On the lake, from Memorial Day to Lake. Only on the weekends, which I think is the Fridays and Fridays after, makes that has to consist of four days.
What was Lyle's attitude to, to rent that?
He has, what we've done is give that latitude if somebody pulled in on a Friday night and said, I want that lake.
That pretty much takes care of that problem. But the, the red flag being on there, I, I know exactly what he's talking about. You're, if your server's looking for where you're gonna stay, and this one's got a red flag on it and the next one doesn't, you're falling.
Well, what it is, is when you go into the system, you put in the dates that you want. And say it's on one of them particular sites, one through nine, I believe it is, of ten on the lake. What it does is there's a banner that pops up and it's red, and it says, lake sites are only available for four-day rentals.
Yes, it's not available. And then you gotta read the next line to see that it's.
Is that what?
Unless, unless you.
Four-day rentals on weekends.
So it says in that banner, four-day rentals on weekends.
Lake sites aren't available.
But the thing is, how many working people take off in winter and take around lake sites for four days?
I'm agreeing with you.
You don't want their $50, you'd rather have their $100. That only goes around so far, because then those people are gonna be upset when they come. And the following year, they're gonna take the wooden show up there at lower rates, or one of the other campgrounds, barn park or whatever. I don't think we need, need that. With this grid system we got on this computer, I can tell what's, what is free and what is not free right there by pulling that grid up. That's said on the computer at all times. You know, I, I, I just don't feel that restrictions like that are needed in our park. I don't think we're gonna gain anything from it.
Yeah, I, I honestly think it's the opposite. I think when you get on the system and you look and you say, hey, somebody's got that site on the water Friday and Saturday night, 'cause that's when they wanna come out. But I wanna go camp all week, but now I have to leave Thursday night because I can't have it on the weekend till, of course. This was the exact discussion we had when we did this rule. So the people didn't take the weekends and take the whole week away from somebody. Because what'll happen is, you'll fill up every weekend on the lake. Everybody get on reservation shows, say, how about Friday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday? How many campers out there are gonna come and stay Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? When they can't have the weekend that they have off? I mean, that, that, that's the exact reason we did it, was because if you truly want it Friday and Saturday, you can have it. But out, but we want a hundred dollars of revenue on that lake site.
We don't, we don't have a problem with it in July and August. Those sites fill up, and 94 percent fill rating in July and August. It's May and June.
This doesn't even go until Memorial. They don't even go until July.
Huh?
This doesn't even affect May. The four-day res, the four-day does not even affect May. It starts Memorial Day through Labor Day. And the whole park was empty the first three weeks of June because of bad weather.
No, you're wrong.
No, I, 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 I am not, I'm not gonna, there's gotta be more information. Our park system, I'm speaking now. Our park system was incredibly empty the first three weeks of June. Incredibly empty because of the weather. So how we can now all of a sudden assume that it was because of the four-day stay? I, I, I agree with Joe, that we need to postpone this until we gather a lot more information. We're all a lot more comfortable talking about what we've seen, and we've heard back from some people that stayed in the park.
Well, I think that maybe the solution could possibly be a compromise between the two things, 'cause July and August, you know, you go to lots, I mean, lots of hotels have restrictions on numbers of stays over weekends, and it would make sense for July and August to have a four-day restriction, but open it up the rest of the year so that
We have.
Those that can travel can travel, but just July and August be the only time that you gotta.
July and August, I can say, what we did this year was we moved it Memorial Day through Labor Day. But Memorial is too early. I'm not, I'm disagreeing with that. What I'm saying, I, I think, I'm so confused with all right now, I personally would like more time to think about all of it and see all the information that's out there, and that we, we can gather the information for the whole camping season once it's closed now.
Why can't you go ahead and use what Lyle had suggested here? And what we had the meeting, we had a meeting over this, and you put us in the decision where you wanted us to decide on this stuff. Now you've taken it away from us. Because if, you could do this for one year and see how it comes out. It'll be a trial period, one year.
What the committee does is bring recommendations based on the information they gathered. You didn't make a decision.
No, I didn't say we need to, I said this, I told you this.
What I'm asking for now.
I'm talking this time, Ken. We made the resume, we, we made the agreement, and we decided it would be nice to use this for one year as a recommendation. Now, I didn't say we were voting on it. I said we all agreed that this was a good idea. And I can't see any reason why we can't at least try it one year.
By the, what are you asking us? I, I, I'm just, I'm just completely confused.
I'm just asking that you read this and okay it.
I, I, personally, I'm sorry, I can't okay it because I don't have enough information to make a, make a good decision.
Ken, how can you make any more information than what Lyle has given you on these, on these? This is, I can't ask her any more than what you've got here. It tells exactly how much we made on each site, how much it's going for, the whole.
Well, my, my question again would be, what weekend worked the site for the four days? These, these are the kind of things I need to make a thing, is, was the four-day restriction really prohibited? I see in here, you wanna shut the reservation system down for the off-season. I mean, there's things on here that I've just got so many questions about and not enough information to even make a decision myself personally. That, that, I just. I know, we, we've talked about.
My, my own situation is.
My, my own feeling here, you hired me to take and manage the park and run the park down there. And I come back with recommendations, and I went through this three times now, this is the third time. See, you haven't got any faith in me, or I'm doing a poor job.
But that's not what I'm saying.
I, I, I think it's been a, a good thing. This, this system's been a good thing. And I think it, it can be a better thing if we take this restrictions off and, and go back to where we were and follow through with this, this reservation system and let it go.
And here's the thing. It does trouble me that we're, um, uh, we've hired Lyle and we're not letting him do the job. He's gathered a lot of data as a person. He's not a computer that you can see the data in front of, but he's bringing recommendations based on him talking to campers, him interacting with, with all of these people who have come in, and we are not giving it merit. That, that bothers me. We've hired him to do a job. I think he's done a wonderful job, and he's been treading water. He's, he's been trying to talk about this since the beginning of summer, and it's, keeps getting pushed off, and.
Well, we, we, we do have a system out to gather all this information. The reservation system will give it to us. It'll give us all the information we want in any aspect of the park. I mean, I, I, Lyle, you did a great job leading, I hope you're understanding this personally, not what I'm saying.
I understand that, Ken, but it is, it is, you can look at my end too and say, you'd be in just as frustrated as I am right now. You would have, you've got a little less hair than I've got, but mine's gonna lose a lot of hair over this right now. Because I, I think we got a, a great system. Corey's been working on some of these reports and so, we're gonna have some of those cleaned up and everything. I don't think we need these restrictions. I really don't. I, I think it's not serving a purpose. July and August, we just don't have the problem with that four-day weekend because we, we're full. When you got a 94 percent fill rating in July on that lake, that means you're full. It is a pain to take and put in an admit reservation to take and rent that site for one night because that site happened to be empty. When you got people standing there waiting to give you money and so forth, you gotta take time to put an admit reservation in there to take and sell that site. I just don't think we need that stuff. I'll, I'll, I'll take and eat my words if, if next year proves me wrong.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with, a lot of people don't like it. I'm not saying that. I, my thought is it would be really good to get the campers input back from a questionnaire to know what they say about it. Do they say get rid of it, do they not?
Lyle has done that. He's talked to them.
Are you gonna, are you gonna be able to communicate with the ones that didn't rent the campsite because they went to the website and saw the red flags? I mean, does the website, you said the reservation system tracks everything. Does it track the people that go view those lake sites, camp sites, and that don't book them because of that four-day requirement? I think there's a big loophole there that, you know, I understand getting data, but I think there's a hole there.
You can take and put it out for all the campers that we've had this year. You can send all the mailers here one out there, just like you said. Those people have had sites. They're gonna give you a, a positive answer, the ones that did come in that.
So who?
That you want.
If, if July and August, if you said there's like 94 percent occupancy on the lake sites? I, I don't know who we reach out to, where the problem is. We had 94 percent.
Talking about the month of June. You're only talking about the month of June.
Uh, that, but that's, he's saying lift it for the whole time.
No.
We have 94 percent.
Lift it from the month of June.
So make it from July for?
July and August, if that's, well, okay, let me ask this. What, what is the, what is the harm in postponing August for one more month? Until we drop?
He's gonna go home.
No.
I'm going home next Sunday. I'm closing the park down. I would like to have an answer. I, I've just been stalled along, long enough, and I'm sorry I feel that way, but I think that any of you people sitting behind that desk would feel the same way if you were in my shoes.
You're right, Ken. I can hear the frustration from the park manager right now. He is so frustrated. And you guys have been working on this. He's giving you the data. I think you need to let him manage the park. You hired him. He brings recommendations back. You guys have had your committee. This has been going on. I was at the last meeting. He said he would give it to this month. I was here at the last meeting. He says I'll give you one more month. And I think you need to take the park manager's consideration. I know you listen to him. You're the village council, but he's done wonders for that park.
Right now, the motion on the floor, floor, to postpone voting until more information is gathered and is set. We need more on that motion before we do the motion there, exactly. Read the motion back to postpone his voting until more information is gathered. That would, I'd ask for a roll call so we have a good record on that.
Ken?
No.
Rodney?
Yes.
Chapman?
No.
Carter?
No.
Pam?
Yes.
Travis?
No.
Yes.
No, it's out. Motion failed.
Now I'd like to make the motion and make accept the recommendations. We have received them.
I think we're discussing it a little bit differently. I couldn't support the whole thing. But I would, I would be in favor of maybe pulling the red flag.
Pulling the red flag?
And then, like, like Ken said, we give them the attitude, rent the lots.
Okay, we pull the red flag, and how about the?
The four-day restrictions, I think, I think that, I think that's fine for the, the months that it's in. In fact, not. I, I, I was just by recommendation, I mean, I, I think Lyle deserves some, some credit for what he's done, how he's managed to protect it, he's done very well. And I'm sure that he has the, the concern of the best, the best interest of the park at hand. I'm sure that's his, his motor business, not just a, it's personal, that guy. And as I am with you, Paul, I'm sure that Ken has the interest of the manager of the park in his, in his mind, too.
And I agree with that, I think Lyle's done a great job down there, and I'm not trying to dismiss his, his recommendations, but as you said, you couldn't agree with all of them. That was my point, the majority of them I don't agree with, is why I made the motion to postpone.
If we did this, maybe, uh, consider removing the red flag and just temporarily restricting the four days to July and August, and try it next year, and don't change anything else.
What about the opening and closing of the reservation system? Uh, what about the deposit?
Yeah, it's just get submitted.
Sam, I know there's, there's, I'd only agree shutting the reservation system down. I want it open twelve months out of here.
That's what I mean.
I'm from May, May first to October first. I'd only disagree with that. If I go somewhere, I want to reserve, reserve spots in January, February.
You want to move through these rather tiny?
Yes.
The motion on the floor now, if I have a right, is from Chapman, to remove the red flag on the reservation system and change the four-day restriction to July and August only. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Chapman, seconded. There any other discussion?
What about those reservations or the, the policy, rather? We're gonna get to...
Down, we're gonna do one of these.
Oh, okay, all right, I agree, yes.
All in favor? Aye, motion passed, we can move on.
Are you listening to that?
I'm good.
Go ahead, I'm recording.
The next one is going, that we're showing is the May first to October first, um, holiday restriction minimum engagement speed. And we, let's have a motion made. Okay, that, like, the first three alms were covered in bills, correct? Discussion on the order to research during the reservation, four-day sites, and then May first to October first reservation period discussion. So now we're down to the 2014 year. I make a motion that we leave the campground reservation system open year-round.
Motion on the floor to leave campground, the campground reservation system.
Motion on the floor to leave campground reservation system open all year. Motion by Bodley, seconded by Fair. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, I'd just like to hear from Lyle on why it was his recommendation to, um, to limit it from May first to October first.
No, our agreement was at the committee level, we take and do it for one year and then leave it open the next year. The thing is, we get everybody started out on the same page, the first of May, and then we can go. Right now, we've done four jobs of notifying everybody and everything last year. This year, we got it closed until first of May, if we put up a notice in our webpage and so forth, the reservations will be started first of May or the twentieth of April or whatever, and go from there. Everybody that's got computers and so forth, they're accustomed to our reservation system now, they can look at it and see that there, and they'll be on the same page. We won't be having somebody jump and load the, the sites up.
Once we get through the first year, I think we'll be all right.
My opinion on that is that everybody now, everybody now without even feeling, nobody had prior warning to us starting that this year. Anybody who didn't know we had, had a reservation system, didn't know we had a reservation system, so they called Lyle and he made them a reservation. I see no benefit from it. I actually see more benefit by leaving it open for people to view, get in, make their reservations for next year. And if we want to progress in the campground, stay open longer, do other different things, this gives us the ability to do that. When we first researched this system and Cory sat here and did his presentation, we all said that it is a great thing, it's three hundred and sixty-five days a year of reservation. I, I can't...
I'd like to add to that. I think that leaving it open all year to make reservations would, if, if I were doing that, I would like that because I would see that you already have it for this weekend, so I'll move my vacation to this weekend and make the reservation, and now I'm sure that I'm gonna get it.
I think it would probably work out, but we had a lot of...
And it may, it may result in more rentals in the earlier summer.
We had a lot of people that didn't understand the reservation system or something this year.
But this, now they'll have it a year to, to get used to it, and it is available.
We gotta get that, we gotta get that out on the webpage and, and, and get it out there, that the reservation system is still open, so...
I think that'd be a great help to me, planning my, my early summer vacation.
I think, I think it'd be a hindrance to close it. I think people get very confused first to open it, and then it falls underway to a date. And I think the big, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry. I think the big advantage to a reservation system is it is open year-round. So next week you decide, and you know you have it, that's just, I think it's, I think it's very important to stay open all year.
I'm just not, I don't know.
It is, you can go home and, and find, maybe we had so much fun up there, just till July two thousand thirteen. We're doing it in two thousand fourteen, reserved right then. Now, there's so many benefits to it. It should be twelve months, so.
So any discussion?
I, I think it...
I think, okay, I mean, we're done discussing.
And your job would be a lot easier, it's free. It'll be done already, all that part will be done.
Motion to leave the campground reservation system open all year.
They already have reservations, whether the...
There's a motion to leave the campground reservation system open all year. It was made by, made by Bodley, supported by Fair. All in favor? Aye, motion passed, we can move on.
Next one is going to be the deposit. Again, this is one that I, I'm on the fence on. I'm not against your guys' recommendation for the deposit, uh, but myself being a camper as I was, an average camp, the average camping rental or, or camps like Rental and Campground Lyle, seven days, six days.
Seven days, four, five days, like we're only up to...
It's probably a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, I, I, that's your average state. I, I don't, I think we're gonna make and create more work for you if you start doing a deposit than pay you when you come in. If them smaller amounts of money update eight days or whatever is only two hundred dollars, you're, I, I think it's very easily payable and, and better to do. So I, I would...
You've only had to sit on the backside of this, you haven't had to work with it. I'm willing to take and do this here to take and bring these people in.
But I do, I do agree a hundred percent with people who stay long-term, um, as we had a couple this year that they allow, we allow like a monthly payment for them, which we did this year. I just not, I mean, if you're gonna do the deposit thing, I mean, that's, I just think it's gonna be more work for you, and it would get harder to track, and the system will have a harder time with it. But it can be done, I mean, it'll find it.
Why, why, why would, there's no sense in having a computer to save it to track? I mean, that computer will track everything you just said. It told me you wanted information on this.
Well, because, because you have, you have two different amounts in two different places on, on your system. When you make a reservation and you take a twenty-five dollar deposit, as you have in the past, for an eight-day reservation, that eight days or other seven days doesn't show up until a month and a half or two months later when they come in. And now you gotta go back and say, well, they got an eight-day reservation, but they're only charged twenty-five dollars. Now you gotta try and get back to the end of that to say, oh, here's the other.
I, it shows up on the screen, and I think it'll take and make our life easier when it comes to finalizing everything.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not against Lyle, I'm just, I think it'd be harder on you, and it'd be harder in the tracking of it, but it will be done.
I don't, I don't believe that tracking would be an issue. I think it'll make it a little more current on this. You're not gonna pile up a whole bunch of money on that reservation on credit cards and so forth when they come in.
What do you mean by pile up, I, I'm not...
When they take and make a reservation, like, that's gonna be open all winter long, to pile up money on credit cards. That's your problem. When they come in there, I don't have a problem with them coming in there.
I'm, I'm still, I'm not following what's your problem, I don't. Just the system updates daily, so it goes on like my...
But there are three months, four months, five months of credit card out there.
He's saying like if someone charges, they make a reservation in November, but they don't come until May, then their card is charged and that money's used then? Is that? So why tie up that person's money for...
The deposit isn't gonna make a bitter difference to me, as far as I'm thinking. It shouldn't make a difference.
As a business owner, I want my money upfront. I want, I wanna be paid, I wanna know I'm paid for those days, and...
Well, hotels don't do that, they don't charge you until you get to the hotel. Well, but it's, it doesn't take your money.
If you don't show up with us.
Well, but then Cory, the other, thus the other side of it is that, you know, we pay a fee every time somebody uses their card, and if they, you know, cancel or whatever, and then they...
There's a six-month non-refundable fee.
Yeah, but, but I mean, we pay the fee as, as merchants, and then we have to pay the fee again if, if they were to cancel or something.
They're allowed to cancel within so, so much of a period, so there are policies in place for that.
I can't, I'm not gonna disagree, I was gonna say...
I think it's gonna be more performant under...
As a business owner, also, um, I require my fir, the first-night deposit, and I get it. And that proves to me that they're gonna show up, and if they don't show up, then they don't show up.
What if they're looking for two weeks?
It doesn't make any difference.
But then you've got people that call, we're in on those two weeks. That's, that's where the problem lies.
All right, I'd like to tell, say this, Lyle, you're willing to work with us and do the extra work if necessary.
I put some figures there, four days, four days upfront, four days or less, they pay their, the whole thing upfront. Four days or more, you pay us a hundred dollars. And I've got the credit card number there, and it's just a matter of taking it, pulling it up on a computer and taking, running it through on that card. It's there, that, that number's there, it stays there for, I don't know how long. I have, I can go back in there right now and find something that was put in there in July.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to be accept that deposit and reservation section.
I guess we have to... The way, the way this is written...
I think it needs, the motion needs to be spelled out clearly, uh...
Clearly, because what I'm looking at right now, like, is one of it says more than four nights, a hundred-dollar deposit. Well, if I stay on the site at twenty dollars a night for five nights, I pay for the whole site. Just, I, I'm not against any, I just, the simpler we keep it, I think is the better for you, for everybody.
But a four-night deposit, then I'm be done with it.
I've talked to people that truly say in their rentals, they charge them upfront. You know, these are people that travel, I say, if I'm gonna go rent a cabin, I, I pay it upfront. If I rent it now and I want it June, I pay for it.
I always do, Kim, and I like that.
Other, other people, I agree with you, other people say, I don't want you using my money until I get there. I just think whatever we do, let's try to keep it...
Well, I think you just nailed it, just do the four-day and that's that.
Four, four-night deposit, and if they don't show up, uh...
We can, we can, I think we'll keep it simple.
Four-day, let's go with a four-day deposit and, and be done with it because we gotta encourage the people to come in and we...
That takes the work...
We can use that money, that money is ours right now. The way it started out this year, you were taking the card, and you were holding the card, you're holding the check, and everything else until those people finished the camping. And then they were built. This way, it's our money right now.
Okay, then...
Did you take deposits last year?
End of second, zero to zero.
Was there deposits taken last year?
This camping season or the two thousand?
The previous, the previous camp.
It would've been just through Lyle and, and sending in deposit stuff.
For, if income increased to fifty-eight thousand, fifty-seven thousand over last year, and the previous year you took deposits, and this year people paid upfront, again, as a, as a business owner, I, I'm seeing, I don't see what... I understand what you're saying, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just trying to understand.
I'm just trying to wrap my way around how we do it, but simple under reservations.
Why would you change it?
Four, four-night deposit and be done with it, and I got the card numbers there anyway. When they come on site, they take the balance, be done with it.
And that's a non, non-refundable deposit is what you're saying?
Non-refundable deposit unless there's an emergency and we refund everything but twenty-five dollars.
Well, I, I'd have to ask what...
Deposit at time of rental.
What is an emergency and why would we do this?
Death in the family or medical emergency?
If you didn't arrive, you didn't get nothing back.
On a case-by-case basis.
You had seven days prior to your arrival, you get canceled.
Yeah, 'cause I, when I looked through some of, some of the reports that I have had, we had a lot of medical emergencies in our campground this year.
It was really simple.
I've done, I, there's, and eighteen?
Hey, just, just to get back on topic, we first discuss if we want to take a deposit or not. Then, then we'll, then we'll discuss a cancellation policy.
Okay, then I, I've said that.
Can we discuss, okay, we just, just, I just want to get everybody's brain wrapped around it. How, how does it, how are we gonna word it that if they stay three days? I mean, how, how do you, how do you say, is it full payment? Just give me, give me some words to say on a reservation system.
Anything under, anything under four nights is full payment.
Four nights, four hundred.
Four nights or more requires a hundred-dollar deposit.
Less than four nights, everything upfront.
Okay, if, if four nights or more require a one-hundred-dollar deposit, because I'll say the advantage to that is too, at that point, we have their, the system we use will store their, store's the wrong word, they get mad when I say that. Basically, stores their credit card number. If they don't abide with that cancellation policy, their card gets billed. So if they want to stay for thirty days, then they pay the full. If they don't cancel, we, we, it's the same as getting the money upfront to me because their card will be billed if that's the policy that's set.
Right. That's what I don't appreciate.
Let, let us do one motion at a time.
I, I've gotta still wrap a little bit on this, and, and I'm going with it, but let's say somebody stays in a twenty-dollar site for four days, it's only eighty dollars.
But we're not putting a hundred dollars, we're, we're, four ninety thousand.
Oh, it says it's less than four...
Let's get rid of the hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars. Maybe that's what somebody else, uh, that person is saying, that's...
Okay, so how do we word all, all reservations?
Put it down. Sam wants me to go watch the Tigers game. Sam? I think the board will excuse you if you want to go watch the Tigers game.
I'm serious. So how are we gonna work it?
That's the four nights.
I was just gonna go check, I'm lying.
Yeah, don't need to change, that's the way this is.
That's the four nights, he's got order.
When I would do, if it's four nights or more, I'd ask for fifty percent. If it's thirty days, you pay for it. Four days, they're making something, four days or more, you pay fifty percent.
Because then you're gonna give to the people that we allowed to stay for ninety days, and they don't want to pay half of it upfront, and then we'll pay with that. So I'm sure we, that's why we gotta keep with, me, I, I won't, I'm...
Forty percent.
Lyle, he's done it this year.
Yes.
Because then we have...
That's an easy one. Yeah. I'm just, that's how I record it in the way.
Okay, so if you, if you just, you're just gonna restrict it to the four-day reservation.
Less than four nights, everything upfront. Over four nights, one-hundred-dollar deposit, is that what you got?
About the change.
Yes.
Reservation...
Four-day reservation.
Less than four nights.
Four nights or more.
More than four nights.
Four nights.
So that'd be five nights.
Reservations of four nights or more require a four-night deposit. That would be roughly the difference between twenty-nine and forty. That make sense?
Yep.
Reservations of four nights or more require a four, like, four-day deposit. Is that, is that?
That's...
We're hanging every morning.
Yeah, we're all trying to get to the same place, we're just...
Okay.
Okay, so about the...
Where do you look at that?
I'm looking for me to make that motion.
Now I can make that motion the way you were doing it?
Okay, can I, can I?
Yes, please.
There's been a motion...
One second.
For reservations of four nights or more... There's been a motion for reservations of four nights or more to require a four-night deposit. Motion was by Clark, seconded by Chapman. Any further discussion?
I don't vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes your name. Thank you. We're getting along. I know you're missing the Tigers, but we're getting...
I can, I can live with the rest for now. You can leave the other stuff and work on it, but that is going to...
Is that good? Can we... Left the red flag that was on one in July and August, leave reservation open, the four-day on one, what other we want on?
You can think about that $2, I don't care. I don't care.
And Lyle, what about the pavilion rentals, too? Because that was, that goes to the...
Can we rethink about that?
That pavilion rental, I probably should handle it again this year, next year for the fact that I have already taken two rentals, and I would hate to see those people get...
They would. Would you be opposed to, though, if we did find a way to do it there, reservation system, and put those on there right away? I'm just looking for easy ways for people. I'm not, we're not taking away from them.
I wish he could find a way to take and send right in that computer, so we could do it.
Is that good? And the two you have, you just let us know, and they will, they will...
That would be wonderful, if you can do it.
Actually, it's called like Camp Rattle or Camp Space number 49 or something.
Sure, there's a way we can do it, where it's a building rental, and you just let Rachel know those tools, and we, that will happen.
I will. Before I leave here, let's do that.
Thank you. And on a refund policy, this is my, my thought on a refund policy. If we decide you have to cancel within 48 hours, 72, 96, whatever, and leave it at that.
You've got some...
If they come in and say it was a medical emergency, I, I, and I know they'll repeat this, I don't think you give them that option to start with. If they come to Lyle and say, Lyle, it's a medical emergency, I need to go, then you make the decision, because we do trust you, and you give them their money. That's a decision like you have to make, like Michelle said, a case-by-case basic, because I'm afraid if you tell people, if you cancel, it's a medical emergency, we'll give, refund your money. Everybody wants to cancel, is going to have a medical emergency, so I would rather not see that wording in there.
No.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying. Trust Lyle, 100%. I'm giving where they're necessary.
The reason that medical emergency is on so many of those, because that computer will not take and leave you refund money, even on that 72-hour thing without a reason, and that's the easiest reason to put in there. Once I started, it was the first one, which was an actual medical emergency, that computer keeps that in there, and I'll have to do a shift test button.
So, what, what would we like to see as a, believe, I don't, I don't, I don't go camping and I don't reserve a lot.
There's a 72-hour one in there now, so we can, we can live with that.
Are you happy with that? I, I personally would like to see a week, myself, but that's...
I would, seven days.
Let's have a day, whatever, that's my own, personally.
If Lyle will live with it, it's good.
Seventy, 72 hours with this computer system will allow us, normally, to take and pick up the difference.
My only issue is that 72 hours doesn't leave a lot of time to re-rent a campsite. Seven days gives you a little more time.
With this, with this computer, no problem, because the, the grid is up there, and you can see what's available, and...
For you, yes, but for the average person that comes in, look at it, they don't see the backside grid that, that we do as admins. So they go in and they put in their date, you see what I'm saying? They don't see it like that.
Here's, here's my hope, is that we don't see many cancellations. So firstly, I'm okay. Lyle likes 72 hours. I'm sure Lyle's in agreement, but if it becomes a problem, we'll talk about it and change it.
Absolutely.
Because I agree with you, the cancellation policy hopefully isn't enough time to re-rent the site. Lyle feels 72 hours will do it.
I think it will, and this, this is a work in progress. This is taken a couple years ago.
Okay, are we done with that?
Well, I'm going to write down where the cancellation...
Where are we at now?
Yeah.
I don't want to do it. Yeah, we'll look at it, we'll just look at it.
I have the third year here.
And I have one thing, someone in the village, I would like to know, ask for the campground to pull, if they could, they've got company coming in for Thanksgiving, if they could put their tents down there.
I didn't, I was, oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Talk first.
I have lots and lots of people that come to me and ask me if they can occupy a spot in the campground during deer season. Tremendous amount. So all that can go in from there.
I would like, I would like to just, at least this year, try it, maybe for a couple of years, just, and I know Lyle will be gone, but we have these sites there, if the campers want to reduce the rate like crazy, put it on the reservation system, just leave it open. Sam's going to run it. Sam's going to run it. Then the DPW would...
He's paying the bodies.
I think it could, I think it could turn into, like Sam said, if we want to restrict it, as we talked a little later, adjust that inner circle and not the lay plots in case it snows, and it falls off, but I think there's a big market there for hundreds of people coming, like, every year. You know? I would...
Right, if we're there, but we'll keep it a seven...
They'll come in, they'll go take a warm shower. I think it'd be a great...
I don't know, I never did, why else not?
I think, I think if you get those...
I think...
Hey!
Well, it's beautiful. No, I, I, that's been talking about it a while.
That's what we, I didn't even expect. They haven't been wrong. So...
We just came out.
Dan Jones has got...
Uh, Dave Pickman. They're me today, watching themselves.
No, we're separate. We need to be careful.
No, I was saying, they're the camping perks.
No, 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 no.
Modify.
Why even reduce them? $10?
Are you talking about electric and water, or just...
Yeah. We will shut the electric to their sites, while we were talking about it. Can we leave electric on to the sites, shut the water off, but leave the back off?
Any individual shop site can have the power shut off to them.
If we shut the power off, you have people running generators, I can see an advantage to leaving it on, but then maybe a charge will work for the site, I don't know. Do you have anything worth $15 a night for me to pull in somewhere and plug my thing in? And use their bathroom and take a warm shower? Yeah, you know, that's a good point, like Melissa said, we're, we're looking at only the inner circle right now. Leave it at what it is, 20 bucks. You see how it goes?
Yeah, I'm sure. You're not changing reservations, is it?
Well, you got electricity, yeah.
Costs you $7 to go to the motel and take a shower.